Good evening. I will call the Missoula City Council meeting for June 12th to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Our first item of business as always is roll call. And I'll note for the record that all members are present with the exception of Ms. Anderson and Ms. Cheryl. I know Ms. Cheryl is going to be joining us a little late tonight. So we'll note that when she does come in. We have no minutes to approve tonight. And so we can move on to public comment on items not listed on the agenda. Any, anyone want to make a comment on something not on our agenda? Mr. Moore, you're hesitating. Come on up.
My name is Bob Moore, M O O R E. I guess I got a lot of requests today. I went out Sunday to see the Marshall Mountains. That I understand is being a consideration for buying. I want to put in my two cents that I don't want you to buy the mountain. It's total waste. The reason that somebody wants to sell it is somebody in the city wants to set, get, get their hands on it or, or whatever they're doing. It is an inappropriate asset for the city of Missoula. Complete, 100% unnecessary and not needed. Time that thing place got fixed up and so forth. Three million, four million, somebody wanted to make a guess five million dollars. While there's thousands of things to be prepared before. I guess I must not understand what TIF is. Like I've asked the mayor several times to fix my blight and he still hasn't done it. So either I don't understand blight or he doesn't understand blight. Cause I'm sure he wouldn't fail to do it if he ran across blight. City council went all around the shopping center. Oh yeah, all this is blight, 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 blight. None of it was blight. But still we managed to give away 10 million dollars plus or minus before. If anybody would pick up this brochure that the, I guess the MRA fixed it up. They got in there what definition of what is a blight? And maybe you can show me next time. If there is such a thing as blight, why isn't, hasn't been, it been fixed for the last 50 years or whatever has been needed as blight? Anybody else wants to help me understand what blight is? Oh, I guess nobody does. Guess nobody does. Like the three million plus several millions people or dollars that were needed for the Marshall Mountain. I got this long letter amongst other letters.
Mr. Moore, you're at three minutes, so you could save the letter for next week if you would.
Okay, okay, I'll do it. If you bring me the definition of blight.
Thank you, sir.
I'm trying to learn what.
Anyone else tonight for general public comment? Line up.
Been here before, so you recognize me. I'm mainly asking some general information that I think that the public should have. And a lot of this is all related to the homeless. You know, how many people are moved, have moved here from out of state or non- Missoula residents that have moved here? I was wondering some statistics as to what caused them to be homeless, whether it was, you know, domestic abuse or, or disability or being let go or being evicted or been forced to be homeless due to rent hikes. You know, how many are families? How many are with children? And how, how many are veterans, you know? And how many persons are going to be able to be in the new planned housing? There's just a lot of information and I wish that maybe it's Missoulian's fault. I'm not sure. The reporter's fault, but the general public would be nice to know what's happening with a lot of this stuff with the homeless. And I was wondering if you could provide last year's annuals city government's cost of providing his assistance, including the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. How much is the total dollars in one year for the, the homeless? Another one is how many are mentally disabled and how many are physically disabled? And in this latest debt provisions, they're coming out and saying that next year, whatever that is, that people that are aged 50 to 55, who are physically able have to work 80 hours in order to get their SNAP benefits. And I'm thinking, okay, you guys are going to have to be planning on this. Being able to either put them to work or finding out how many are affected by this provision of ages 50 to 55. And they've excluded the disabled and the veterans, but that's one of the other things. And last week's city council, I heard the issue of river pollution due to the garbage and human waste and drug waste by camping below the bridges. And I was wondering if your emergency funding that you're going to be doing is to be away from the rivers where you're going to go. And I was thinking that Marshall Mountain should be one that should be considered. I was just talking to Gwen and she said bus routes may need to be something for the homeless to be able to access the city if they are working in the city. The bus is in East Missoula and Marshall Mountain's not that far away. So maybe that's a possibility. And I talked to someone in the crisis team over at McLeod Park last week. And they said the biggest problem is getting an organization to monitor this, the shelter. I'm not sure what it's, all the issues are, but I, just general information on the homeless and I was listening to PBS and Mayor Bass in LA has 40,000 homeless. They're putting them into hotels and mall, malls and any under, under utilized commercial buildings. And I, so then it brought me to wondering, what are you guys going to be doing with the public library? Are you putting it up for sale or are you going to use that for housing? Just some general information I wanted.
Thank you. And we can, we have much of that and we can follow up. And you know, one thing that I forgot to mention is we're asking people to spell their last name now. So if you could just spell it for our, our-
It's Barbara Puley, P U L L E Y.
Thank you, Ms. Puley. And we'll follow up with some of that. Also for anyone listening, our engagemissoula.com is a city website that has a lot of, a lot of good information on it, on this in particular, and I'll follow up, we'll follow up directly with the information you've requested.
My name is Ally Harrison, more three, H A R R I S O N. Missoula's future belongs to those with vision. As Theodore Roosevelt said best, it is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena. Thank you for being in the arena. I know you've all received a lot of criticism, but you don't receive enough encouragement. I've come today to say thank you. I believe it's time to stop cursing the darkness and instead to light a candle. Missoula stands at a great crossroads today. While in some ways we are indeed in a state of emergency, we are also on the precipice of finding the most innovative solutions to the most challenging problems we face. And together, putting divisions aside, I believe love will prevail. I believe there's a tidal wave of compassion about to flood Missoula and all of us are a part of that. Thank you for being the answer that we need.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Anyone else in the room tonight? For general public comment? If you'd like, you're welcome to step on up. Go right ahead. Can we just ask you to give us your name and spell your last name and keep it to about three minutes, please?
My name is Bob Charles. And I'm, I've been here my whole life. I'm retired from the city of Missoula and state of Montana. I'm just here to address the homeless problem. And I know a lot of people are and you're getting emails and, but contrary to the belief, most of these people are not Missoula homeless. They're transients. They come here to live off us. They choose to live off us. They don't want to work. If you will, look at their age, they're all twenties and thirties. They're not looking for jobs. They put their name, their picture and stuff on the front page, but the reporters never ask them, are you looking for a job or do you want one? Because there are plenty of them. You see the people on the corner panhandling? They are all in their twenties and thirties. And it's getting, the Missoula's becoming a cesspool. They are contacting other people in Seattle and Portland and it's going to keep pouring in. It's not, it's a crisis here, yes, but not humanitarian. I agree. You can't do anything about criminalizing the camping, but you can the other crimes. There's vandalizing, there's littering, there's urinating and defecating in public. There's alcohol, drugs, assaults. There's all kinds of things that can be enforced that would be against the taxpaying public. And it's not being done. And this is just inviting them here. And it's, it's got to come to a head sometime. And when they're not in their bedrolls at two or three in the morning, they're out stealing. Because I've arrested them. I know. That you've got to look for things that aren't tied down that they can pawn for drugs and alcohol. And I'm sorry, people, please don't turn a deaf ear to this because the public is getting more and more and more worked up about it. And we're tired of paying for these people. We raised our families on, working two to three jobs and they're gone. And now we're on fixed incomes. And things keep going up and up and up to take care of the homeless, the transients. That's not right. I mean, that security, the six and $700,000 for security could go to the police department, the street department, net, many different things in the city besides opening another shelter for the transients. I'm sorry, I'm not, you know, turn on the deaf ear to the truly homeless ones that need a leg up. That's fine. But not the transients and they will keep coming and coming and coming. So there's got to be something done. There's, something's got to be enforced. And there's a lot of different things besides the camping. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your comments. Anyone else tonight? Okay, seeing no one else in the room, I have one online commenter. Mark is Andrew.
Yeah, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you so much for taking time to listen to my comment. I'm calling, Mike Nugent is aware. I'm a Fairview's resident. My full name is Andrew Richards. Last name R I C H A R D S. I'm calling about Mountain Lion and the removal of bus stops on High Park Way. First off, the communication was really poor, but that's not the main topic here. The topic is safety. Mayor has to release your bold priorities that you see in the future. Community safety was in the top and this is definitely a safety issue. They removed the bus stop that was at Parkview Way and High Park Way at that junction and made, moved it to Whittaker. Okay, that's fine. However, there's no pedestrian pathway on High Park Way. If it's like this, someone's going to get injured. I mean, it's fine. You do it in June. What about January? There's no lights, there's ice, there's snow. It's really a safety issue. It could be your parents walk in there. It could be your children. All ages use this bus stop. And to see them remove it, it would not have a pedestrian walkway. It's really going to cause an accident and I really ask anyone that's interested, come meet me. Let's meet up. I'll, I'll walk that road with you and you can see if that's safe or not to have the public walk in there on the bus stop. I really ask that you look into this, assess the safety hazards and please get that bus stop moved back in. One additional comment, you know, we just passed that levy for increased services for Mountain Lion. And to see them remove these bus stops without taking public comment, it's really disheartening. So thank you very much for your time. I really hope you take the safety concerns seriously and thank you for, very much. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Thanks for your comments. I'm sorry, I was off mic. I see no additional public comment, so we can move on to our scheduled committee meetings. Ms. Ray Biden.
Thanks, Mayor Hess. Let's see here. So folks, next week is Juneteenth. And so city council will not be meeting on June 19th. It is a holiday for city employees. And federal holiday. And so we're setting up committee meetings for the next two weeks. And don't let me stop committees, announcing committees without announcing the meeting, the luncheon with the MDA. I'll do that at the conclusion of committee schedule. So I'm sharing my screen so everybody can follow along. Trying to make things a little bit bigger here. Hope folks can see a little better. So we're setting up committee meetings for the coming two weeks because there's no meeting next week, Monday. Public Safety and Health Committee will meet this week Wednesday. Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee, I'm sorry, will meet this week Wednesday from 10:00 AM to noon. And they'll be taking up three things. One is a surpress resolution for fire department equipment, declaring an emergency regarding homeless encampments and directing staff to to develop short and long-term solutions to protect public health and safety and manage current unh- the current unhoused crisis across Missoula. And also to direct administration to develop short-term and long-term solutions to assist the unhoused and address urban camping to protect public health and safety. Budget and committee will meet on the 14th, this coming Wednesday from one o'clock to 1:45. They'll be taking up two items. One is a microfiche scanning agreement. And also be taking up the city council's budget process for the fiscal year 2024 budget. Public Works Committee, excuse me, Public Works Mobility Committee will meet this Wednesday from two o'clock to 2:30. They'll be taking up a bid award to MJD Contracting for the replacement of a primary effluent lift pump for the city's wastewater treatment plant. They'll also be taking up a professional services agreement for the Dickens to McCormick Water Main project. The Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee will meet this coming Wednesday from 2:45 to 3:45. They will be having an update on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund implementation. The Public Works and Mobility Committee will meet this Wednesday, excuse me, next week Wednesday on the 21st. From 9:15 in the morning till 11:15, taking up three items. The first is an interlocal agreement with Missoula County for the Missoula Development Park and contract for Herrera for regional stormwater system condition assessment out there. They'll be taking up the downtown safety access mobility public outreach summary. That's also referred to as the SAM. And finally, there's a presentation and resolution supporting the city of Missoula's Safe Streets for All Grant 2023 application. The Committee of the Whole will meet next week, Wednesday on the 21st from 1:45 to 2:30. They'll be taking up a resolution calling for the method of city elections and considering whether or not to hold primaries in any of the offices on the ballot. And finally, the Land Use and Planning Committee will meet on next week Wednesday on the 21st from 2:45 to 3:45, taking up the Sapphire Place Annexation Rezoning Subdivision and Master Site Plan. That proposed project is out in the, I think it's called the Sutapin area. So west of Reserve Street. And stop sharing. Switch screens. And the city council members will be attending the Missoula Downtown Association's Annual Luncheon. That is this coming Wednesday. And let me get to my announcement here about time. It's going to take place at the new Missoula Public Library. And it is happening from 11:30 to 1:30 this Wednesday on the 21st.
Thank you, Ms. Ray Biden. Are there any changes to the schedule? Seeing none, that will stand as announced. And we can move on to our consent agenda. Items on our consent agenda were generally approved unanimously in city council committees. And we save time here at our Monday council meetings by taking the items up as a package. Ms. Ray Biden will read the list aloud and then we'll take community comment before we vote. Ms. Ray Biden.
Hey, I'm going to note for the record that Ms. Cheryl is now in attendance as well.
Thank you for that.
Alrighty. And that was also a nice way to stall the count. How many consent agenda items that we have? We have seven of them tonight. Hang on and I'll share my screen so folks can follow along. Alrighty. Number one is to prove accounts payable, which are the city's bills in the amount of 10 million, 325,686.15 for checks that are dated June 13th, 2023. Number two is to appoint Matt Evans to serve as a voting member, community, the community member on the Affordable Housing Resident Oversight Committee with a term that begins June 1st of 2023 and ends May 31st of 2026. Also, the committee is recommending that city council appoint Julie Pavlish to serve as a voting member. She would be the housing and real estate member on the Affordable Housing Resident Oversight Committee with a term that begins June 1st of 2023 and ends on May 31st of 2026. Number three is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the change request form with Withham Smith and Brown PC for Office 365 Planning and Implementation in the amount of $100,000. Number four is to set a public hearing on June 26th, 2023 on a resolution amending animal control fees. Number five is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Mike Collier as the city of Missoula's Police Chief. Number six is to approve and authorize mayor to sign an amendment to our interlocal agreement with Missoula County and the city of Bozeman to continue working with our mutually secured consultant on a green power program that meaningfully advances assured clean energy goals in the amount of $55,000. And finally, folks, number seven is to adopt a resolution relating to $420,000 Storm Water System Revenue Bonds. These are the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation Water Pollution Control State Revolving Loan Program Series 2023 Bonds. And this resolution authorizes the issuance of those bonds and fixes their terms and conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Ray Biden. Is there any consent or any public comment on the items of the consent agenda? Seeing none in the room. I do have one online. Hunt? Mr. Hunt, are you able to unmute? Appears as though Mr. Hunt may not be able to unmute. Ms. Ray Biden, could you read the phone numbers in case he needs those?
I'd be happy to. Hang on just a moment. For anybody who ever has trouble unmuting their computer and getting their speakers to work with all the technology, you can always call into our meeting. That phone number is 406-384-6960. I'll repeat it. The meeting ID for city council always, doesn't change week to week, is 387-736-445. Count sign. I'll repeat that. It's 387-736-445 and the pound sign.
Thank you, Ms. Ray Biden. So, Mr. Hunt, I see your hand up again. You can go ahead and try to unmute again. Not, you're welcome to call us. Okay. So, Mr. Hunt, you're welcome to give us a call. The number is Ray Biden listed and I'll watch for that. In the meantime, one more call for any additional online or in the room public comment. Seeing none. I'm sorry, you're welcome to come on up if you'd like to make a comment. Oh, okay. So without any discussion from council. Ms. Vesica.
I just wanted to say congratulations to soon to be Chief Collier. I'm very happy that council decided to, to appoint you to this position. So congrats.
Anyone else?
Okay, I just want to break on Chief Collier a little bit as well. Chief Collier was, has been with the Missoula Police Department for a number of years. He grew up here in Missoula and attended the University of Montana along with North Idaho College, where he received a degree in law enforcement. And he's been, he started out at the Coeur d'Alene Police Department, but he's been here in Missoula since 1996 in the Missoula Police Department. He started out as a patrol officer and worked his way up through the department, holding a number of roles and gaining really intimate familiarity with the department. He was a motorcycle officer in the traffic unit and the field training officer. And then he was promoted to sergeant in 2001, where he supervised uniform patrol teams, the traffic unit and the street crimes unit. He was promoted again to lieutenant in 2008 and he served in the Office of Professional Standards where he was responsible for citizen complaint investigation, internal investigations, recruiting and new officer hiring. In 2011, he graduated from the FBI National Academy and was later that year was promoted to captain and was assigned to the detective division. He led the work that guided the Missoula Police Department. He led the work, uh, that um, guided the Missoula Police Department, uh, with the U.S. Department of Justice to reform MPD's response to sexual assault. And um, was uh, in that division until he was transferred over to uh, to the uh, to serve as the administrative captain, where he oversaw the Office of Professional Standards, the Property and Evidence Unit, the Records Unit, the police, the police support specialists, and the training program. He's um, served as our interim chief now twice and um, has uh, and has served in that role uh, with distinction. I really enjoyed getting to know Chief Collier. I found him to be intelligent and thoughtful and compassionate. And um, I, I think that he cares about the department and that he cares about our community and that those are attributes that show through in his work every day. I couldn't be more confident in my choice and I couldn't be more confident in the work that he'll do moving forward. And I'm really grateful to present his um, his appointment for your confirmation. I want to thank the council members who served on the hiring process, uh, as well as members of the department and the number of external stakeholders who served as well. And I don't see any additional comments, so we can have um, we can have a real call vote, Ms. Raybine, on the consent agenda.
Okay, on the consent agenda, hang on just a minute. Becero.
Yes.
Carlena.
Yes.
Fontos.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Vaseka.
Yes.
And West.
Yes.
And would any of you like to change your votes? That is eleven eyes and one answer.
Please join me in congratulating our new police chief. Are you waving me up here?
I, I think that you're welcome to make remarks if you'd like, or you're welcome to shake everyone's hand or both.
We'll make a quick remark. That's okay. Thank you, Mayor Heson, council. I'm just completely honored to be here and um, humbled at the faith that you show in me to lead our department. They do great things every day, as all of you know. And to have the opportunity to, to support and lead all of them, um, is, is quite an opportunity. I say all of them because I think oftentimes, you know, we see on the news and in the media and they make movies about what the cops do, the badges do, but we have reserve officers, we have non-sworn people in the field. How we have non-sworn people in the department and all of them collectively make the work happen. And so, um, I, I am going to make a point to myself here moving forward to recognize all the members of our team. So, uh, speaking of team, I never set out to be the police chief. I, you know, as a new cop, I thought walking in, if the biggest accomplishment I could make would be to be the badge number on the briefing board. When other officers walked in, they were happy to see me as part of the team. Thought if I get that done in a career, that's a successful career. And so, I've carried that forward and, you know, as a sergeant, I wanted to be part of that team. And as a lieutenant, I wanted to be part of that team. And now I kind of find myself, I want to be part of this team with, with council. I want to be the, the name on the lineup that you guys see as part of the, part of the working group and you're happy with that and be a teammate, team member with all of our department heads. So, again, thank you so much for, for all of the faith that you've put in me. And I couldn't be here tonight without the support of my family and past and current leadership within the City Police Department. I appreciate everything that they've done to help nudge me along this far, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations. Hey, it's official. Congratulations. Thank you, Chiefs. All right, um, we have no comments from city staff, agencies, the community forum, the neighborhood councils, or our various boards or commissions. Um, we do have two special proclamations. Um, the first, whereas the City of Missoula has partnered with the National Wildlife Federation to promote the creation and conservation of wildlife habitats throughout the Garden City. And whereas our local pollinating hummingbirds, bees, beetles, flies, moths, and butterflies are essential for maintaining healthy and biodiverse ecosystems. And whereas pollination allows plants that form the foundation of the food chain for other species, including humans, to reproduce. And whereas pollination plays a vital role in the health of our forests and grasslands, which provide forage, fish, wa- and wildlife, timber, water, mineral resources, and recreational opportunities, as well as enhanced economic development opportunities for communities. And whereas the Act of Gardening for Wildlife promotes sustainable gardening practices such as soil and water conservation, organic practices, and control of exotic species, all of which to help restore healthy soil, air, and water that native pollinators rely upon. Now therefore, I, Jordan Hess, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim the week of November, or of June twentieth through twenty-sixth as Missoula Pollinator Week. And grateful to the folks who presented that. Do we have anyone here to speak for that? I don't believe we do. Okay. And our, our other um, proclamation, uh, joint proclamation with Missoula County and the City of Missoula. Whereas Missoula County and the City of Missoula acknowledge the lasting impacts of racism in the United States, fueled largely by the horrific institution of slavery. And whereas, news of the end of slavery did not reach frontier areas of the United States for more than two years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation on January first, nineteen sixty-three, and months after the conclusion of the Civil War. Whereas, on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with the news that the Civil War had ended and that the enslaved people were free. And whereas African Americans who had been slaves in the Southwest celebrated June nineteenth, commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day, as the anniversary of their emancipation. And whereas African Americans from the Southwest and across the country continued the tradition of Juneteenth Independence Day as inspiration and encouragement for future generations. And whereas, for more than one hundred fifty years, Juneteenth Independence Day celebrations have been held to honor African American freedom while encouraging self-development, respect, and dignity for all people. And whereas, the strength of character, faith, and resilience demonstrated by former slaves remains an example for all people of the United States, regardless of background, religion, or race. And whereas, the character demonstrated by former slaves should inspire us in this country to give thanks for the freedom won by so many people in all nations and to strive for the goals of bringing freedom and democracy to people of other countries, no matter what their race or religion. And whereas, although Juneteenth Independence Day is beginning to be recognized as a national and even global event, the history behind this celebration should not be forgotten. And whereas, Montana proudly joins forty-seven states and the District of Columbia in observing Juneteenth as a state or ceremonial holiday. Therefore, be it resolved that we, Missoula County and the City of Missoula, do hereby proclaim the nineteenth of June as Juneteenth Independence Day to commemorate African American emancipation from slavery and to celebrate the freedom of people, of the freedom, the freedom won by people in many countries and to rededicate ourselves to the cause of liberty. Um, I invite our community to participate in um, a number of the activities to celebrate and commemorate Juneteenth um, held throughout the community next Monday. And I'm grateful for those uh, occurring. We have no items for final consideration, uh, nor do we have any items. Uh, we do, I'm sorry, we have, we have no items for final consideration, but we do have a public hearing, which is the Sapphire Place Annexation Rezoning Subdivision and Master Site Plan. We have Dave DeGrandprey here with our staff report. And this public, this public hearing will, will, um, we open the public hearing tonight and we'll take this up for final consideration on June twenty-sixth. Mr. DeGrandprey.
Thank you, Mayor Hess. Sharing my screen now, and we'll get started. Uh, good evening. I'm Dave DeGrandprey, Planning Supervisor with CPDI. I'm here to facilitate your review of the Sapphire Place Annexation Major Subdivision and Master Site Plan. The property is located just west of Flynn Lane and Mary Jane Boulevard in the Swetupkane Neighborhoods Master Plan area. Summit Beverage and the New Veterans Administration Clinic are to the north. The two hundred and sixty lot West End Home Subdivision, which council reviewed in December, is to the south. And the Icon Apartment Home Subdivision is to the west. Uh, the Icon Project is in staff review currently. Council will, will review it in August. The parcel is not currently in the city limits. City limits on the map is shown in the pink tone. Annexation and zoning upon annexation are elements of this project. The city has an adopted annexation policy and the property is located in Annexation Area A. Annexation, or sorry, areas designated Annexation Area A largely meet the guidelines of the city's annexation policy and are prioritized for annexation. Annexation of this property would fill a gap left by previous annexations and result in orderly development. Plans for the property are to extend sewer, water, and transportation infrastructure in accordance with city standards, which the annexation policy also supports. The property contains eighteen point seven three acres of land that was part of the larger Doherty Ranch. The site is relatively flat, containing an historic ranch home and outbuildings, an orchard, and some of the largest ponderosa pine and Douglas fir trees in the Missoula Valley. An irrigation ditch runs west across and southwest across the property. These are images of the Doherty Ranch Residence and Ice House. The style of architecture is American four-square or prairie box, and buildings were built in the early part of the twentieth century, uh, between nineteen ten and nineteen twenty. The Montana State Historic Preservation Officer determined that the buildings are eligible, eligible to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The buildings have retained their integrity and are proposed to be refurbished and remain on-site as an element of meeting the parkland dedication requirement for subdivisions. And here are a couple of photos of the marvelous pine fir trees on the property, which are proposed to be preserved as in, in one of the open spaces as part of the master site plan. The slide here shows the preliminary platte. The subdivision includes thirty-nine lots and six open spaces slash common areas that are intended to support approximately three hundred residential units in buildings of a, of a variety of types and scales. Several new streets and alleys are proposed to provide access to the lots and future buildings. The streets are intended to connect to future developments in all directions. The subdivision also includes a portion of the Flynn Trail, which is planned to be a new multi-use path, part of the build grant project to extend from the future Grant Creek Trail to the northwest all the way down through this property and then heading south along Flynn Lane to Hellgate Elementary and Middle School to the south. The average lot size in this subdivision is zero point three six acres and the overall residential density is sixteen dwelling units per acre. This image shows the master site plan. And I'll get into some of the details of development that's proposed as a part of this. The property is accessed from Flynn Lane at two locations. The north is Sapphire Lane running west from Flynn and near the south is a new street called Pine Butte Boulevard. Four new streets are proposed, including those, including those I just mentioned, as well as Roper Way, which is the main north-south street running through more or less the center of the property. And in the southwest, a short extension of Burnett Drive, which is planned to connect to the West End Home Subvision again that you recently proved. Access to all buildings is proposed to come from rear alleys as well as sidewalks and trails along the building fronts. There are several open spaces that you can see shaded green. The historic residence and Ice House is located in the center of the property on Lot Twenty-One. And the large trees are located in the open space called Open Space Four, uh, that surrounds the historic residence. And there's one small pedestrian access that would run up between Lots Five and Six, headed from Sapphire Lane to a new trail street along the north boundary of the property that I'll mention, but I'll talk about it in greater detail here in a minute. This is an illustrative landscape plan exhibit showing um, what the, what the eventual plan is. So, the developer Cathcart Group uh, is proposing to entitle all of these lots, rezone the property and annex the property, of course, then build the homes, the streets, the sidewalks, the trails, uh, and the park and recreation facilities. There are a number of different um, building types. There are duplexes, there are um, larger multifamily units, et cetera. Uh, proposed clubhouse and pool, um, area and other recreation areas are part of the, the plan as well. And to the north, I mentioned there's a trail street. This was developed, this is uh, along the north boundary of the property. Trail Street in this area is considered a street type, even though it's really for pedestrian and bicycle type purposes. And the developer uh, will build that if this project moves forward as a portion of the subdivision-related improvements. So, speaking of subdivisions, to review a subdivision, there are several criteria that the governing body, in this case, the City Council, must consider. Subdivisions must include the consideration of the growth policy and zoning, impacts to agriculture, agricultural water user facilities, local services, the natural environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat, and public health and safety. And these are the review criteria that are evaluated in detail in the staff report. But I'll go through them in, in, uh, in short over the next couple of minutes. So, this is the second project that City Council has lo- has reviewed that's located in the Swetupkane Neighborhoods Master Plan area. Uh, the Swetupkane Neighborhoods Master Plan area is the applicable regional plan or growth policy. The master plan requires development based on neighborhood unit types. You can think of neighborhood unit types like a future land use map designation in the growth policy. And the property is predominantly in a town center neighborhood unit. This neighborhood unit is intended to provide a mix of residential and commercial uses within an urban setting. When a subdivision or a property is located in more than one unit, the developer has the option of choosing the unit where the majority of the parcel is located. In this case, again, town center neighborhood unit is where the majority of the property is located and the developer has chosen to apply those rules to this subdivision development. Um, the Swetupkane Form-Based Code, which is the Missoula Title Twenty-One Zoning Code, requires specific percentages of zoning districts or transects based on the neighborhood unit type. The neighborhood units are, I'm sorry, the transects are located in the far-left column here. You can see in green, O, which stands for open space. Uh, T three is a more rural, uh, transect. It's, it's residential that allows a density of six to eight dwelling per, units per acre. And the T four uh, is a residential and commercial district. T four R, R stands for restricted, is largely residential district of urban scale. And then T five, shown in red, is the most urban of all of the, of all of the transects or zoning districts in this area. It allows for a wide range of uses with buildings up to five stories tall, so it's a more urban area. Uh, and the Form-Based Code also requires at least three residential building types to be provided for each transect to encourage uh, changes in scale and, and of different residential types, changes in form, as the Form-Based Code mentions. So, this, this table here is, is really critical in evaluating uh, compliance with the zoning. Suffice it to say that all blocks, lots, and development specifications within the subdivision comply with the Form-Based Code based on a detailed staff review. And if you'd like me to go into greater detail on that, I certainly can. Uh, other criteria for subdivisions, agriculture and agricultural water user facilities. The parcel has been used for hay production and has soil types designated as prime farmland if irrigating. The irrigation ditch runs across the property, which is proposed to be buried and continue to supply water to downstream properties. Essentially, the ditch would be culverted instead. There are water rights associated with the property and they are planned to be severed from, from these eighteen point seven three acres and retained by the current land owner. Development of this parcel, the subject property, is not expected to impact water availability or other properties. Uh, and there are several conditions of approval to uh, address this issue. Other criteria include local services and public health and safety. City water and sewer and private solid waste services are available to the site. The parkland dedication requirement is planned to be met via open space parcels and the preservation and reuse of the historic structures, as well as the preservation of important natural resources, the big trees that I mentioned earlier. And these, these elements are encouraged under the subdivision regulations and have been scrutinized and found to be appropriate by the city's Parks and Rec Department. Hellgate Elementary and Middle School, as well as Big Sky High School, did not respond to requests or comment regarding the potential impacts of the development on school facilities and services. Uh, but City Fire and Police uh, will serve the subdivision. An installation of additional fire hydrants to serve the development is a recommended condition of approval that would be reviewed and approved by the City Fire Department. Uh, the Form-Based Code includes uh, different The Form-Based Code includes different street types than those typically required under the subdivision regulations. The specific characteristics of the different streets are based on the types of future development envisioned within each of the transects or zoning districts. I mentioned Flynn Lane earlier, which runs the length of the property along the east, as well as a little bit in the northeast corner of the property, runs along the south. The subdivision will be required to provide improvements along the property frontage, including dedication of additional right-of-way, driving lane, curb, and gutter, a landscaped boulevard, street trees, stormwater retention, and a bicycle and pedestrian path. I mentioned the interior streets and alleys earlier. The developer would be required to construct those streets in compliance with the Form-Based Code. Sidewalks are included along all streets, and I mentioned the Flynn Trail earlier that would run from the west property boundary through the subject property to the east and then along Flynn Lane heading south. The streets are all proposed to be built by the developer and dedicated to the public, in other words, the city of Missoula, for ongoing maintenance. Alleys would be maintained privately. No potentially significant adverse impacts to the natural environment, wildlife, or wildlife habitat are perceived as a result of the subdivision. There's no flood plain, no steep slopes or other natural hazards, no surface water, riparian vegetation. There is the potential for high groundwater, however. As part of the Mullen Build Project, a portion of Grant Creek is proposed to be realigned into a more natural path. This project could result in changes to groundwater in the area, so staff proposes a condition stating that basements are prohibited unless and until the subdivision can provide adequate data to prove they are safe to construct. Noxious weed management plan and revegetation were included, or revegetation plan were included as part of the application packet. Initially, a biological assessment of the area was conducted as part of the Mullen Build Project. This assessment was used in the development of the Swetupcane Master Plan, slating this area for development. There is one variance request from the city subdivision regulations, and that is, the applicant has requested, I'm sorry. The subdivision regulations require that each lot abuts on and has access to a public or private street or road. So abut on and have access to. Lots 24 and 25, you can see here surrounded in red, do not abut a street while Lot 26 only partially abuts onto Flynn Trail, which, Flynn Trail, although it's a pedestrian bicycle access, under the Form-Based Code qualifies as a street type. Access to the future structures on those lots, shown as duplexes on the master site plan, are planned to come from the rear alley of sufficient width to provide fire department access. Alleys are not considered to be streets in the Form-Based Code, so a variance is requested. There are six review criteria to consider when granting a variance. First is impacts to public health, oops, public health, safety, and welfare. In this case, suitable fire department access and fire hydrants are available or will be available throughout the subdivision. Motorized and non-motorized transportation will be available to all lots based on the site plan and conditions of approval. And therefore, the granting the variance would not result in a threat to public health, safety, or welfare. I'm going to take number two and three together. The conditions unique to the property as well as undue hardship, which would result to the applicant if the variance were not granted. You can see along the west side of the property, there's a funky angle. It's not a square, in other words, you're not right angles. So this unique shape of the property, as well as the planned route of the Flynn Trail, and the Form-Based Code requirements that homes front onto streets or face public streets and parks, as well as the requirement that alleys provide vehicular access to the rear of structures are all conditions that are unique to the property and would result in undue hardship if the variance is not granted. Number four, the variance will not in any manner violate the provisions of the zoning ordinance or the growth policy. Five, because all of the streets and alleys and trails and sidewalks are going to be built by the developer, there will not be an increase in public costs if this variance is granted. And lastly, the hardship was not created by the applicant or their agents. Again, it results from the unique shape of the property, the planned route of the Flynn Trail, the requirement that homes front onto streets and parks, and the requirement that alleys provide access to the structures. So staff is recommended, and the planning board is also recommended. The council approved this variance request. There are several proposed conditions of annexation, I'm sorry. Thirty-three recommended conditions of approval for both annexation and the subdivision. They're really, for the most part, quite standard, but to go over a few of them here. Dedication of right-of-way for Flynn Lane, an installation of half-street improvements along the property, installation of sewer, water, stormwater, all other street and alley improvements, including the Flynn Trail and the trail street that I mentioned earlier, multiple accesses to all lots, parkland dedication and historic preservation, as I spoke of earlier, fire hydrant installation, et cetera. So there are a few motions that council will take up in the LUP Committee on the 21st. Annexation would be the first one. So staff has recommended a resolution to adopt, sorry. Staff has recommended council adopt a resolution to annex the property, and the annexation would become effective upon satisfactory completion of all conditions of annexation and approval of the final subdivision platte. Next, the subdivision. Both the planning board and staff recommended approval of the variance requests that I just spoke of. And staff recommends approval of the Sapphire Place subdivision preliminary platte application and master site plan, again, subject to the recommended conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. I mentioned the planning board. So last Tuesday night, the planning board held a public hearing and unanimously recommended approval of the variance request. However, a motion was made to approve or recommend approval of the subdivision and master site plan, and that resulted in a tie vote, four to four. Under the bylaws of the planning board, it's essentially no recommendation, but the application continues onto city council. There was a great discussion. I think some of the board members lamented the lack of mixture of uses in this subdivision. What's proposed here, I mentioned the different transects earlier. About a hundred lineal feet is proposed to be used for commercial in the T5 area. Not a huge amount of mixed uses, and we don't have a lot of detail on what the market might want or what the developer might propose. So I think the board members were thinking that more commercial would be helpful to reduce vehicle trips, to provide greater community in this neighborhood, this new neighborhood as it develops, et cetera. The board also was uncertain how this development kind of fits in with other development that's being proposed in the area. As you know, the properties right out here are greenfields right now. They haven't been developed yet, so there's just kind of some head scratching thinking about how all these developments might fit together. Board members also, not being super familiar with historic preservation requirements, asked council to look at the conditions, and there are three of them, regarding historic preservation to see if they are sufficient to meet city's policies. However, board members also recognized the need for rental housing. And so while some felt that this application or development is imperfect, other members thought that the meeting the demand for housing certainly outweighed the demand. And lastly, several board members stated that recognize that this proposal does comply with the review criteria. And so the planning board did not have access to this map. This is something that I-MEG sent in to show context. And so there are three developments now that have been proposed in this Swetupcane area. The one that we're looking at now is the lighter shade surrounded by white. This is the Sapphire one with the star right here in the center. The star is where the historic home would be located. And then to the south of that is West End Homes. You can see there's a street connection that's made. And then in pink, actually, along the east boundary of that project is the Flynn Trail. You can see how it would come up through this project and then head out to the west and ultimately the north along the forthcoming Icon Apartment Homes project. So you can see that these plans are starting to come together. We're getting a sense of how these new developments might occur. The green shade shows parkland area, and the yellow shows commercial. And so this is the Sapphire project again, near the star. There's a yellow area where the clubhouse and some commercial is proposed. And then also in Braxton coming up here later this summer, there's some dedicated commercial there. So I think without having resources like this, it's kind of hard to see. You know, when you have a one-off project, one application at a time, it's kind of hard to see how everything works together. But in any event, that's now available. And so that concludes my presentation. I thank you for your time and attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions or we can keep this moving. I know I-MEG and the developers here also to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Mr. DeGrandprey. And would the development team like to come up and give you words?
Absolutely, thanks. My name is Joe Dehner, D-E-H-N-E-R-T, for I-MEG here in Missoula. And we are representing the Cathcart Group, the development team, for the Sapphire Place major subdivision. And actually, Dan LaMay with the Cathcart Group is going to share a few things with you all, say a few words, and then I'll come back up to the podium if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. LaMay?
Well, good evening. As Joe mentioned, my name is Dan LaMay, that's L-A-M-A-Y. I am the vice president of development and pre-construction for the Cathcart Group. And I'm here tonight to obviously speak on behalf of the applicant for the Sapphire Place subdivision. Based on the previous presentations last week, we thought it might be helpful to provide this body with a bit of an overview about who we are and sort of what we do. The Cathcart Group is a family-owned vertically-integrated real estate company providing development, construction, and property management services all within our larger umbrella. We have been in business for almost forty years, and over that time, we have grown to have almost thirty-nine hundred units under management. Our primary focus is on garden-style, open breezeway, non-elevator buildings that are generally three stories in height and sometimes have included basements or terrace levels depending on the site-specific grades. Obviously, with the topography of the Sapphire Place site, we are not contemplating basements at this time, so that's not presently part of our vision for this site. I do have three quick slides to provide, hopefully, a little better context as to what some of our properties in our portfolio look like. And we would expect similar level of finishes with Sapphire Place. The first slide is for the reserve at Rivington. This is a two-hundred-and-seventy-six-unit development that was completed in the fall of 2021. The two-hundred-and-seventy-six units are constructed in eight primary residential buildings on approximately eighteen and a half acres of land. And this project, similar to Sapphire, includes a centrally-located clubhouse. The next slide is for the reserve at Daleville. This is a one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-unit multifamily development that was completed in mid, I'm sorry, in mid-2020. The one-hundred-and-eighty-eight units are constructed in five primary residential buildings and two duplex-style buildings. Those would be similar to the buildings that were just reviewed for our Sapphire Place subdivision. This project is constructed on about twelve acres of land. And similar to my previous slide, this property also features a centrally-located clubhouse as well. And the last lot I have is for a two-phase development that totals four-hundred-and-eight units. The initial phase was completed in 2015, and the most recent phase was completed in 2018. And again, similar to my previous two examples, this property features a centrally-located clubhouse as well. One of the distinguishing attributes of our portfolio, we think, is our commitment to quality. We strive to develop assets that we're able to manage and operate to high standards because we are long-term asset owners. We are not fee-based developers looking to flip a deal. We believe that our approach to managing for the long term allows us to create properties that offer high-quality amenity packages while also providing our residents with a high degree of customer service. We also believe that this long-term focus allows us to develop our communities in a cohesive and holistic way to create spaces for our residents to live, work, play, and recreate. It's not uncommon for our communities to have employees that also live in the community that they work within. And this is especially true with our approach on Sapphire Place. We believe that the agro-farm development that was just discussed to our south and the future plans for additional commercial on properties to the west and north of our site will be complementary in use and that we are well-positioned to create the rooftops needed to support these growth opportunities within the surrounding area. So that concludes my very brief overview. I'm obviously going to remain on the call, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions that may arise. And I'll turn it back over to Joe to speak to any specifics pertaining to our application. So thank you very much.
Mr. LaMay?
Good evening again, Mayor Hess and council members. Do I spell it one more time?
No, you're fine.
Okay. Joe Dehner with I-MEG, obviously. Dan just introduced himself. I think it's great that you got to at least see someone from the development team and a little bit of the color of what we're talking about when we're proposing Sapphire Place major subdivision. Before I get into a few of the comments, which is really the purpose of my discussion here tonight, I do want to set the record straight regarding the annexation language. Specifically, I think it was presented to you all at the LUP discussion that it was at the request of the development team. We did not request that that language be added. Rather, we asked for the timing of annexation to be clarified. And with collaboration with Dave, they added that language for clarification purposes. The key issues that have really come up, or key comments, I would say, have been surrounding the mixed-use development. I would say the clubhouse came up at a few different times in planning board. We also discussed the ranch house and what the potential plans could be for that, really what it would look like, because that's a bit of an atypical component with this project. And then finally, the spirit or the intent of the Mullen Master Plan. So in that order, I'm just going to describe and really try to distill the key components for all of the comments that have come up so far. First and foremost, regarding the clubhouse, the comment that came up was, in the event that something were to happen with the conditional use permit, and I can provide more detail on that if you guys prefer in the discussion portion. But in the event the conditional use permit wasn't approved, what would happen to those spaces? What would the T5 center look like in that area? It definitely bears repeating that this project, as you all saw from Dan's slides, is contingent upon the clubhouse being permitted. Really, it's central to the Cathcart Group's vision and project. And included with that clubhouse conditional use being approved is also the office and retail requirement for the T5 transect zone in the town center neighborhood unit. So I'm only bringing this up to assuage concerns that what happens in the event this clubhouse doesn't come to fruition, that is central both to the Cathcart, development team's goals, and also to the overarching Sapphire Place subdivision. Regarding the ranch house, and it was a similar comment. What is the guarantee that the ranch house will get adaptively reused? What are the safeguards that the city of Missoula has or that this project has baked in with the conditions of approval that make sure that it's not just going to be an empty, random house in the middle of the development? And I had mentioned the fact that the developer already has skin in the game regarding the plans, and this has been a multi-year process, and there's been a lot of conversation surrounding it. But similar to the clubhouse, nothing in this development is haphazard or hasn't really been thought out. And the Cathcart Group has enveloped this idea of an adaptive reuse into their overall site plan and baked into the conditions to address the concern about what the city can do to align with its policies. There are requirements that not only the restoration for the building, but the plans for the restoration for the building be hashed out prior to final but the plans for the restoration for the building be hashed out prior to final plat approval, which means there is no legally-platted lot that this ranch house would be on without a plan for it. And with that, there was actually a pretty interesting comment that came up surrounding what could be done in the ranch house. Right now, as you all have seen from our plans, it's slotted for just two residential units. But after the comments surrounding mixed use, after the comments surrounding what are we doing for commercial out here? We were talking with the development team, and they immediately said, well, we're allowed to do whatever permitted uses are granted in T4O, subject to review and approval by the Historic Preservation Committee in the city of Missoula, Parks and Rec, and Development Services. So in the event there's a coffee shop, or a small café, or a bookstore, or some demand for something in the old ranch house, because I would agree, it would be kind of cool to see that there, they're open to it. And they're permitted to do it, which is one of the biggest benefits to the Form-Based Code. There's a lot of challenges in working with it, but there is flexibility in that realm for permitted uses within the approved master site plan. Lastly, I want to talk about the spirit, the character, the intent embodied in our proposal, aligned with the overall Mullen master plan. As I mentioned, there are challenges. Our variance alone is a great example of how difficult it is to reconcile subdivision regulations with a new zoning code. You have a subdivision regulation that's mandating fronting a street and a zoning code that encourages, and I would say mandates, fronting open space and a continuous network of alleys. That is a great example of what the development team has been subject to when trying to figure out compliance. But along with that is compliance with street connectivity, with non-motorized prioritization throughout the site, with building forms that create a community. Dan La May is talking about an oversight. The Cathcart Group is talking about being involved with this process and not parsing it out to developers that specialize in a cabin-style house or any other style house. This is going to be a cohesive community where, when you're transitioning from a place like West End Homes with the connected streets to the Sapphire Place, you have a sense of arrival. So when it comes to measuring alignment with the scale or intent of the Mullen master plan, I think those two concepts are married in code compliance. And the project that we're looking at tonight is code compliant in both subdivision regulation and Title 21, the Form-Based Code. With that, I will end my presentation. I appreciate it, and I'm here for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we will open the public hearing first, and then we'll come back to questions. Anyone care to comment from the public? Seeing none in the room or online, we can return to questions from council. Ms. Jordan?
Apologies, wrong button. Mr. La May, I was just looking at your company website and see that you guys have been building luxury accommodation across the country. I'm sure you're aware of the housing crisis that we're having here in Missoula, and that we're having a hard time creating affordable housing for especially our frontline workers. And I'm just wondering if you would consider dedicating a small amount of these units to be permanently affordable so that we can stay in line with our wish to create housing for folks who don't have what others do and that we can keep our frontline workers. And so, yeah, my question for you is, would you consider making any of these permanently affordable?
Mr. La May, or someone from the team?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. At this time, our current program offers discounts to public service organizations, those that are employed as police officers, work for the local fire department, what have you. We generally offer discounts on our marketed rents to support those types of positions. So I would hope that that would answer the question that you're asking.
I'm curious what those discounts look like. I'm guessing these units are going to average probably $400,000 apiece, which is, I would love clarification. I was just looking at the quality and, you know, the other properties that you have and guessing that they're going to be somewhere in the $300,000 to $400,000 range, which is not affordable to the average police officer or frontline worker here in Missoula County.
These are rental apartments. They're not fee simple or for sale. So they would not go for $400,000.
What's the discount?
It's usually 10%. In that range, 10% off the publisher rent.
Thank you. Ms. Becerra?
Thank you. Just a couple of clarifying information. This is within the airport influence area, and I know we have a condition of approval. And Dave, have we gotten positive answers from the airport in terms of whatever that requirement is before final plat approval?
I'm going to have to go back through the file. I know that, or I believe that we have a comment from the airport authority, but I don't recall exactly what it was. I know it didn't raise, or at least I don't believe it raised alarms, which is why it wasn't stressed in the report. But just one second.
Thanks.
Now, in this case, we do not have comment from the airport authority. And I think that is because this project, or I guess I'm speculating, but there are other areas, other properties within this general area that are located in an extended arrival and departure area or runways. This property is not. So when we have a project, you'll see with Icon, I believe, a fair portion of that is within the EADA area, and the airport takes a stronger stance on those properties. In this case, this is in the larger kind of airport influence area, so we simply require an ablation easement be acquired by the developer prior to final plat approval.
Thank you, and I have two more questions. The, what has the public engagement been like? Has there been any with the neighbors? And I know it's required for the subdivision review process, but just curious to know what has happened and what you have heard from the neighbors?
So typical public engagement process was followed in this specific case, and that includes the developer holding what's called a neighborhood meeting, so sending notices out to adjacent landowners, holding a meeting on-site. And then at the city, of course, we have an Engage Missoula page where I posted information about this specific project. We sent our own notices out to landowners within 150 feet of the property and also advertised for two weeks in the Missoula, two consecutive Sundays. At this point, actually, when I last looked at Engage Missoula, which was late last week, we had received no comments. So I received no comments from any citizens.
150 feet from this property doesn't really have any, are there many neighbors? I don't think there are.
No, not many. And most of them are developers. With the exception of immediately to the north, so immediately to the north, there is there is the Summit Beverage. Immediately to the east, there's property for sale. Immediately to the west and south is property that's for sale. And then you have West End Homes also to the south. So no, there aren't, and there aren't a lot of neighbors.
And so the neighborhood engagement that took place on-site, who did it include?
I think IMEG may be able to answer that better than I can. I can pull up the meeting notes that they submitted along with the application. But maybe Joe or Danny could tackle that.
Sure. Thanks, Dave. Danny Oberweser with IMEG, O B E R W E I S E R. We had about a half a dozen to a dozen neighbors show up for the neighborhood meeting, just off-site, off-flynn. Most of them are residents of Pleasant View. The feedback we received was actually mostly positive. They're excited to see the high-quality standards and the high amenity package that is being proposed.
Thank you. And yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Ms. West?
I think I have two questions. My first one is around, I guess, the condition related to groundwater and potential changes related to the restoration of Grant Creek. And I was wondering on that larger map, if you could point out where Grant Creek currently is and where it's expected to be related to this development if restoration is successful. I didn't see it specifically labeled.
Sure. I'll see if it's. So the restoration, I'll share my screen now. And the map shows Grant Creek. So that would be up in, can you see this line in the northwest portion of the map? That's Grant Creek. It's supposed to be moved, I think, a little bit to the southeast. I don't have a visual of that. It's not in one of the maps that I have pulled up. And would have to dig around the city's files in order to find. I'm not a part of that team, so don't have it, I'm not, don't have access to all the files. Public Works of Mobility are in charge of that project on the city side anyway.
Okay, I assume that's what was Grant Creek, but thanks for clarifying. And then I had a second question around, I guess, the potential of childcare facilities within this development. And I realized that they're intended to be rentals, which gets complicated. But I was wondering specifically around the historic property. Like, would this space, would that be a use that could fit into the space? And has it been evaluated for, you know, square footage or that sort of thing for, to house a childcare facility?
Great question. Joe Denert, IMEG. And I believe in the Form-Based Code, they do contemplate what's typically, it falls under home occupation in our current Title 20. With the exact uses in T4O, I'd have to look back at the Form-Based Code, but I believe it is permitted. Now, at the time, or at this time, it's just planned for residential development. But I do think that is one of the permitted uses. But I'm going to go back and check the Form-Based Code.
I can answer that for you. Childcare, a childcare center is allowed in all of the transects.
That's what I figured. Okay.
Can I have a follow-up?
Follow it?
Okay, so my follow-up would be, I realize it's an allowed use, but I think in state law, there are certain like square footage requirements that you have to have per child. And you have to have a certain, there are parameters around the design that I don't think is reflected in our local zoning code. And so I was wondering if any exploration had been made as to, you know, if any of the design is just like flat out, eliminate that as used by design of the actual units, if that makes sense.
Yeah, basically, you're asking, just to rephrase it, if it simply wouldn't work that we know of at this point. So there's actually a, it's a really unique and cool situation that we're dealing with with this ranch house. Because we're subject to adaptive reuse standards. And Elizabeth Johnson, the Historic Preservation Committee, Dave, or Community Plan Development Innovation Services, they don't have carte blanche to just go and say, yes, you can do whatever. But there's a bit of flexibility because you're bound right off the bat with no major structural alterations, because that would, in essence, probably damage the building beyond repair. So there hasn't been evaluation of, yes, we know childcare would work or not. But there's a lot more flexibility when that evaluation or if that evaluation comes to the table. And that's really what I was alluding to, which is if there's a demand, the development team's open to seeing what works. And like Dan said, when you have people who want to live in the area, that work in the area and want to also recreate with the high-end amenities, if there is a demand for something like childcare in that space for adaptive reuse, it would have to obviously be evaluated by the adaptive reuse policies and historic structure. But I wouldn't see why it wouldn't at least be considered if that conversation came to the table. Thank you. Great question.
Ms. Jones?
Heidi kind of asked part of what I was going to ask it, if you want to come back up. It sounds like at this point, you don't have specific plans for what the historic ranch house will be used for, correct?
Just want to clarify, right now, the historic ranch house is slotted to be used for residential units. That's the plan right now. And that plan is based on what the Cathcart team has seen for their entire Sapphire Place vision. But after this comment came up at LUP about, hey, why wouldn't you consider something like a niche ground floor shop? Why wouldn't you consider something mixed use if available? They were like, absolutely, that makes sense. If there's a demand for that in this market, absolutely. And to piggyback on it, I think what is available for permitted uses has a lot more flexibility with an existing structure because it's historic, because of the provisions and the oversight that the Preservation Office gets in the proposal.
Follow-up? And between the adaptive reuse ordinances and regulations and the Setup Kane Plan, you've got the flexibility, in other words, you've got flexibility to do some of that if ultimately it's decided to go in that direction.
Yeah, if the Cathcart team decides, hey, this makes a lot of sense. We heard public interest from it. They've said, we will definitely head in that direction. The reason it's slotted right now for residential development is because it made most sense with the overall proposal.
Okay.
Yes.
And then a couple more questions. I think, Dave, this is probably for you. I just needed some clarification regarding the conditional use, which I believe is for the clubhouse. And that's a conditional use that will be evaluated under staff discretion. Is that the way that works? I just wanted to clarify that. And the timeline on it, I guess, I'd like to know about that.
Sure. Yes, unfortunately, a clubhouse wasn't really contemplated when the Form-Based Code was developed, so it's not one of the listed uses in any of the transects. When that happens, the language that's provided in the code says the developer can propose it as a conditional use, which ultimately comes to city council. Staff, Development Services staff, and hope to review these two, the conditional use for the clubhouse, as well as the other elements of this project, the subdivision annexation, et cetera, concurrently. But due to several issues, staff limitations and turnover among them, we were unable to schedule the both at the same time. As you probably know, when a subdivision application is received, we have to act under state law within certain time periods. With the conditional use, it's not the same. So they tend to get short shrift, so to speak, or, you know, put in line. In terms of a timeline, we don't have one at the moment. I'll get together with Mary McCray, my supervisor, as well as another manager tomorrow to start talking about, to talk again about doling out these projects. I certainly expect within the next four months that it'll be before council, but I don't have a timeline for you at the moment.
Thanks, and thanks for clarifying that that actually will come before council. I, thank you. All right.
Ms. Fermer?
Yeah, Dave, I was just wondering, that neighborhood context map, is that in our attachments on the agenda? And if not, can it get attached? Maybe I'm not seeing it because there's 60 attachments. But I think it's just a really helpful map to see all the development that's happening in that area. So if we could get that attached or sent to us, that'd be great.
Sorry, I couldn't, was that directed at me? I couldn't hear.
Yeah, sorry, Dave. I was just asking about that neighborhood context map that you keep referring to in your presentation. I don't see it as an attachment?
It's not. IMEG just produced it last Wednesday and sent it out. I will upload or have this presentation uploaded. It's the last, to Escribe, and it's the last slide.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Hey, so this will remain open, and Mr. Nugent, you'll hear this in committee again next week. Because that, so we'll, we will move on for now. I guess we could take any comments. We don't, we won't take any substantive comments about the project since the public hearing is still open. But if anyone has any, anything that they want addressed the next time this comes to
But if anyone has any, um, anything that they want addressed, the next time this comes to committee, we could take those now. Um, we have Mr. Lemay with his hand up. Mr. Lemay?
You, you were cut off there on your comments. Did, did you say there's another hearing next week?
So we have, uh, we have this scheduled, uh, it looks like, so what, so our hearing process is a two-week process. So the hearing is now, um, and then we refer an item back to the committee just for additional question and discussion. Um, it's sort of an optional meeting that occurs, uh, just in case anyone has any, uh, questions that didn't get addressed. Um, that is scheduled for Wednesday, the twenty-first at two forty-five PM. Um, and, um, no, typically, uh, I'll defer to Mr. Nugent here if he wants to add anything. Typically, no need for a presentation. It's more of a question and work session. And then, uh, Mr. Nugent, do you wanna add anything?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's accurate. If there were a bunch of questions from council, the opportunity for staff and the, uh, applicants to come back and answer those. So we always schedule it, uh, based on the conversation around the table. And it seems like it'll probably be a brief meeting, but it'll be on the agenda.
So, um, thank, thank you.
You're welcome. And then our final consideration, it'll be back before the, the full body, um, two weeks from today, on Monday, the twenty-sixth. Ms. Raybain?
I just wanted to note for the record that we do close the hearing tonight. Ninety-seven planning committee is expected to make the recommended motions and amend them as they see fit. And then they're voted on next week, or not next week, sorry, on June twenty-sixth. Thanks.
That was my understanding as well, but that is contrary to what is printed on the agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that was my, like, and since it's printed on the agenda, I didn't think we had the option of closing the public hearing. Yeah, but that would be our normal process.
Yeah. Mr. Jim Nugent, I saw your hand come up. Do you wanna add anything?
I was just gonna concur with what Marty was explaining. A few weeks ago, there was some modification made by the council as to how they wanted to proceed.
Yeah, I, I, I agree and understand that, uh, the printed agenda, I don't know if that creates a conflict that we need to adjust here. Um, the printed agenda does say that the hearing is held open, um, but I, um, I know it's our standard process to close the hearing, but...
We'll try to catch that on Friday when we do agenda review from here on out. I missed it. Sorry.
Well, without objection, it doesn't appear as though there's, um, that there's, um, significant controversy that would require amendments in committee, so we'll just keep it open without objection, and then, um, we'll, we'll make that process adjustment for next time. Okay, um, so we can move on from this item. I wanna thank staff and the applicant team for the time tonight. Thank you, council. And, um, move on. We have no committee reports, nor do we have any, uh, new business, um, communications from the mayor. I just wanna, I just wanna highlight, um, the, uh, emergency declaration that was issued on, um, on Friday. And, um, appreciate, uh, the opportunity to, um, uh, describe that in a letter to all of you. And, um, and wanted to just, um, describe that briefly to anyone listening. Um, that on Friday, I declared a state of emergency around houselessness and sheltering i- in the face of rising homelessness and a failure at the state and local, or the state and federal level to act, uh, to provide resources. Um, it is my view that the city must act to continue to work to assist our nonprofit partners to address, um, what is, um, a seemingly intractable problem. It's a problem that's unprecedented in, um, in my, uh, understanding of, um, recent history in Missoula, um, as well as around Montana, around the Northwest, and throughout the country. An increasing number of people, as we continue to talk about, are living on our, our streets, in our parks, in tents, in cars, in RVs, on our, in our rights of way, without shelter. And, uh, this, um, emergency order is aimed to address that. Um, I wanna continue, as we talk about this, I wanna continue to mention my view that over decades and decades, uh, state and federal government have abdicated their traditional responsibility to provide for the basic needs and dignity of residents living on the margins. We, um, that's compounded in the state of Montana by the, um, legislator, Legislature Cutting Case Management Service in, in twenty seventeen, which is, which set thousands of people up for failure around the state. Um, just back to the emergency, uh, the state of emergency, that declaration allows us to levy up to two mils to address, uh, houselessness and sheltering. We, several weeks ago, um, I asked our staff to start working on plans to open a year-round shel- shelter, and this is a result of that. Um, I also wanna thank, um, there's been significant council interest. I know there's some referrals on this. Um, I know that it's been a conversation that you all have been having with your constituents and with, um, with service providers. Um, I wanna thank all of you for that, and I look forward to the continued discussions. I also wanna thank, um, the Missoula County United Way and the, and the, um, service provider partners who provided a letter to all of us today. Um, and I wanna acknowledge the good work with a couple hundred people signing onto that letter and asking us to, um, to take this step, among others. We need to continue to work to identify funding sources, or we needed to identify funding sources. We believe we've, we've gotten to a position where we have, um, a suite of funding sources that allow us to open, um, an emergency shelter, um, and, uh, inside of about ninety days. Um, the Pavarello Center Board of Directors approved that action on Friday morning, and, um, we're moving forward with them, and, uh, will continue to, uh, keep you all posted. The emergency declaration has to come to council for ratification, um, so we'll work to get that scheduled. Um, of course, we need to keep our eye on the long-term goals of, of housing and, um, a permanent second shelter in the community. But I just wanted to, um, get that out there on the record, um, and again, uh, look forward to future discussions on it. We can start this week with, um, Mr. Nugent.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it, and, um, I do appreciate you recognizing and declaring an emergency because it is. And I, I think that it's, we've talked about this around the torch, you, I think it's, uh, you know, it's high time we start referring to it as what it is. I, I am a little frustrated that, that it was declared an emergency on a Friday, and it's not opening for ninety days, so we could have discussed it at council. Uh, and a lot of us were left to answer questions, or were asked questions we didn't have answers to over the weekend. Um, and it kind of feels like some of the neighbors feel like there wasn't transparency in the process. And I think that's something that just, as we have this conversation, no matter what we do, no matter where we put these things, the community is feeling it, and making sure that, you know, pro or con, supportive, not supportive, wherever people fall, that, that they get to be part of the conversation. And, uh, you know, my understanding is that, that the Pavarello was able to have an emergency board meeting on Friday morning and discuss this, which means that the Pavarello's board has gotten more say on this than we have. And I just think that it's important to remember that council has to, has to be part of the long-term discussion of where shelter might be, what those plans are, you know, what makes sense, and what are the priorities of the community. And I, I hope that we take more of that path moving forward. On another note, I wanna say that, um, Midtown Master Plan had their kickoff party, uh, yesterday afternoon. And, um, it was a great event, and there were people tabling, but I wanna highlight that, um, Ashley and Emily from, from the city were there, uh, tabling on, on behalf of the, um, code reform. And they were patient and wonderful with a lot of people with a lot of questions that maybe might be considered difficult. And I just wanna highlight that, um, you know, staff is doing really good work, and, and sometimes it's not the easiest thing to do, so I appreciate it. Ms. Avich?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to highlight again, um, I think I said this last week, but I was quite delirious when I was talking last week, given we had been here so long. Um, this week is Missoula Pride, this weekend, and all of this week, there are events throughout the community. There are performances, there are, um, talks, there's all sorts of events if anyone is interested. One particular one that I would like to highlight, um, is a, um, it's a, a dance company out of LA, um, and they are coming here to perform After Row, Stories of Abortion. There's a Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday night showing, um, and you can get tickets at, um, the Missoula Pride website. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carreno?
Yep, um, I just wanted to highlight the Hald versus Montana court case that's just started. I think it just started today, I believe, but, um, there's sixteen youth across the state of Montana who are suing the, um, suing the state over our right for clean, helpful environment and over the state's contribution to causing the climate crisis. And I'm just really proud of the young Missoulians and Montanans who are taking on that fight. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to mention too is just looking at, one of the things that we're gonna be talking about on Wednesday with the budget process for the year, I think the budget is definitely one of the most important items, if not the most important each year, that the city council takes up. And I see that the recommended motion says to have city council amendments to the executive budget due by August second. And it says that the public hearing will be held on August seventh, fourteenth, and twenty-first. And unless I'm reading this wrong, I think this is, uh, this needs to not pass. Um, the public needs to be able to have a say in what goes into the budget and not into the budget. Um, and if we have to have the council amendments to the executive budget due before the public hearing even starts, that's a huge undemocratic mistake, and I really hope that doesn't happen. So I hope everybody takes a quick, a good look at, at that, um, before we take a nod on Wednesday.
And, and there's some missing information there that we will fill in on Wednesday. That is, um, that is, um, just, uh, really briefly, what we're, what we're hoping to do is have, um, initial priority amendments in at that time, and then, of course,, uh, rolling, uh, periods after that. So we'll, we'll clarify that on Wednesday, but thanks, thanks for raising that. Ms. Vasico?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I was gonna bring that up too, because I do agree with my colleague, um, Daniel Carreno on that. And if the public wants to come to that meeting, I would encourage it, um, I would encourage that. It's at one o'clock, um, this Wednesday, um, in person at one forty West Pine Street or over Zoom. I also wanted to point out, um, I, I agree with part of what my colleague Mike Nugent said, um, about the emergency declaration. Uh, my, I found out about it about an hour before the public did. So, um, I, I agree with the frustration with the public, um, about how I wasn't able to answer a lot of the questions over the weekend. But I do want to thank the mayor for taking a meeting with me today to kind of clear things up. Um, and hopefully, something like that won't happen in the future. So I encourage folks to come to that meeting as well on Wednesday. That's ten o'clock, um, here in council chambers and online this Wednesday. Thanks.
Ms. Kuntz?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Ms. Sherrill?
I'm gonna pass as well. Thanks.
Ms. Becerra?
Pass. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I just wanna echo a couple of the things that my colleagues have already said. It's like you've been reading my mind. But, um, I wanted to also really push, um, our Pride event this weekend. I think that we really need to stand up for our LGBTQI plus community. Um, they took a beating in our legislative session this year, and we need to show them that we support them and that we value their input and, um, their membership in our community. And I will be there at as many events as I can get to. Um, I too also would like to echo that, um, the information's coming in bits and pieces, and we're working on tidying up some communication, um, connections so that we, um, can have answers for our constituents before, um, things are announced. Um, I, I too have been frustrated about some of the, um, information that hasn't been shared in a timely fashion that affects constituents in my ward directly, and, and hopefully, we're working on a pathway so that we don't have things like that happen again. Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, my youngest son watched the first chunk of testimony in the, uh, environmental litigation this morning, and he's good friends with the first woman, young woman, who testified. So, uh, he's giving me blow-by-blow's on the, the whole thing, and I'm like, yeah, keep going to work and do your internship. But I'm excited about that litigation and to see what happens with that. Um, I also just wanted to note the Pride events, and some specifics are, it starts, the Missoula events go from June fourteenth to the seventeenth. And two big ones are June sixteenth, rally at the courthouse, um, steps, and Saturday, June seventeenth, the Pride Parade. So you can look it up for more specifics. And then, um, Juneteenth, of course, is Monday, June nineteenth. So the Montana Black Collective is putting on an event, uh, on Monday out at Fort Missoula. It will be a celebration from ten thirty until twelve forty-five. So lots of good stuff happening this weekend.
Ms. Fermer?
I'll pass.
And Ms. West?
Ms. Sherman, I wanna remind everyone that it's summer, which means that kids on their bikes are riding around everywhere, um, all day long. Uh, so just be a cautious driver, um, because they, I watched them in front of my house and they zip in and out of the, the street at incredible speed. Um, and, yeah, just be aware that there's more people you're sharing the road with, um, during the summer.
Thank you. Uh, we have no miscellaneous communications reports or announcements, so I, oh, I'm sorry, Jim Nugent. Jim?
I just wanna provide some clarification about the emergency stuff. There's, there seems to be some confusion. It's like mixing apples and oranges. The emergency law about the disasters that requires or allows, authorizes up to two mils, only the city council can levy mils. So it has to come to the city council. The city council will have a role. But the mayor makes proclamations, the mayor makes declarations, and I wasn't available Friday afternoon because I had already hit forty-eight hours and had promised three grandchildren that when school got out, we were going to the Dairy Queen. So I had left for the day when they were looking for me Friday afternoon. But the ninety days doesn't apply to the disaster and emergency laws. That's a separate Title X law, so the mayor's declaration and pro-
Mr. Nugent, you went on, on mute. We lost you, Jim. I think you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I don't know where I was when I got on, but I'm trying to clarify that we're mixing apples and oranges here, but go ahead, Mayor. What were you gonna say?
You were, uh, just mentioning the ninety-day, uh, the distinction.
Yeah, the ninety-day law is about ordinances and resolutions, the emergency ordinance. That's a separate and distinct law under municipal powers. As I understand, the mayor's interested in the two-mil levy, which is over in Title X, about disasters. And that resolution will require city council approval. But even the ninety-day requires city council approval, but that's not what the mayor's doing, as I understand it. The mayor's making a declaration, a proclamation, and that will exist unless he withdraws or modifies it. And there's no ninety-day limitation, except it should be clarified, the mayor doesn't make resolutions. Only the governing body makes resolutions, so maybe the name has to be corrected on something. I didn't get to see it because I was out of the office Friday afternoon, but I'm just trying to clarify. There is no ninety-day limit on whatever the mayor was attempting to do or doing. And then ultimately, it goes to the city council, and only the city council can levy taxes.
Thank, thank you for that, and to clarify, it is, it is a proclamation, so, um, we have no additional agenda items, and, uh, thank everyone for your service, and we'll be adjourned.